All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Today is March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Officially called this meeting to order. Uh, our first item of business is approval of the minutes from the Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Valerie, were there any typos? All right, then I have a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? No, that motion passes. Um, next item is the Council Administrators' report. Ms. Kidd?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, councilors and others. Uh, this will be a very brief report, given our impediments, uh, with our system. Uh, the department budget update, as most of you are aware, or all. Uh, our hearing is set for Thursday, March twenty-first, at two thirty P. M. And there is a link, I believe, that you can look at offline, or they are holding it in the Finance Department, uh, conference room. And I have before you the submission packet that was sent for our presentation. And should you have any questions between now and then, um, the review time or the presentation time, please don't hesitate to talk with Jeff or myself relative to that submission. The district budgets will be sent to you for third quarter, uh, next month. Uh, all other information should be the same at this time. Uh, you should have received a notice about your twenty twenty-three Statement of Economic Interest. It is due, as you know, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I've also included S B nine and S B three, which are bills that are being, uh, advocated by Senator Coleman. And, uh, S B nine is Class One Municipalities Enforcement, Enforcement of State Regulations and Municipal Code, Leans, Judicial and Realm Foreclosures, Court Order Sale of Property Recovery and Recovery of Unpaid Leans and Cost of Enforcement. S B three deals with local land bank authorities, Tax Sale Property Acquisition, Tax Exemption for Acquired Properties. So they are there for your review. Under departmental concerns, um, we just continue to work with, uh, each district as you so need us to purge your files and surplus equipment, um, over the last week. We are also thankful to the Administration Communication Team. On yesterday, we had an opportunity to participate with a presentation led by Eric Burgess of Interpersonal Frequency for the proposed launch of the City of Birmingham's new website. It is projected that the new website will launch possibly within the next eight to nine months, and we will share more information as it is shared with us. Uh, we also, I personally want to thank the P I O team for their continued outstanding support of the council in preparation of the Town Hall that was held last night. Um, Ms. Garner, Kim has also, um, translated the book into Spanish, and we're waiting to get a second review of that translation, and then we will make it available on our website and by Q R code, uh, for both the English and the Spanish edition. And I also would like to thank the entire staff of central staff, uh, because as a team, we are in support of supporting this council. The only thing that is, uh, before the Council for Travel and Events as we know it is the Economic Development Academy cohort. Meeting is Friday, March twenty-second. Uh, the location and agenda has been added to the respective councilor's calendars. N C R C Conference is scheduled for April second through the fourth, twenty twenty-four. And the Alabama League of Municipalities Convention is May fifteenth through the eighteenth, and it is in Huntsville. Registration is open through April twelfth. And that is all that I have for you and the, uh, Mr. President and the council. But if there is any further directives or inquiries, I do welcome them.
Any members of the council have questions for Administrator Kidd?
Uh, I'm, where is the, uh, the budget that we have? You said that we have a copy of what we requested from the administration up here?
It's this one, the Budget Office Justification for Position Change. This is the packet.
Our proposed, this, this is, this is our proposed budget that we're going to be submitting in the departmental budget hearings. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It was submitted on the twenty-ninth.
Okay. Counselor Smithman?
Um, something I mentioned to Mr. McDaniel, I can't call y'all that, Cheryl, something I talked to Jeff about. So I know, um, I know Councilmore is passionate about the youth, and we had talked about trying to get some delegates to N L C, for example. And I talked to a couple of other cities, and they actually put it in their budget to send delegates. Um, it seemed like it was more so the mayors, but I know y'all probably already submitted it, but I think in the future that would be nice to have it, because I thought at first they were telling us we couldn't do it. But if that's something we could do, I think that would be very beneficial. Because they, because I know, like, one city had, like, ten, fifteen kids that went. So if that's something possible, I would like to see that.
Um, so Administrator Kidd or Mr. McDaniel's, could one of y'all kind of just highlight, um, the changes from the current budget, office budget? The, what changes, just the high points of what we're requesting?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, if you, uh, look into the departmental budget, uh, there's a difference of an additional, uh, ask for one hundred and eighty thousand. That one hundred and eighty thousand, uh, is spread across primarily three line items. Professional fees, consultants, other, uh, marketing, uh, and travel. That makes up the one hundred and eighty thousand dollar difference, or the addition that we're asking for. Beyond that recommended change, uh, we're asking for an additional two thousand, and that represents fourteen percent increase in our departmental budget. Excuse me. When you look at your respective office budget, uh, we're asking that the amount, the total amount moves from twenty-seven thousand eight hundred to twenty-nine thousand eight hundred, which is a difference of an additional two thousand dollars. And the additional two thousand dollars is being requested in your travel line item. Uh, I guess without saying, uh, but most folks know, uh, the cost of travel has escalated. Uh, and we're looking at a way until the administration comes up with a more uniform way of allowing us to do travel that may be cost-effective. We recognize from your travel patterns that it's appropriate to add additional money in that line item.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, uh, Administrator, Deputy Administrator, my request was that each committee would have a budget, and we would request that from the administration. It doesn't look like that made that into here. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Williams, uh, you are right. That is not reflected in the departmental budget. I, I think there is a way for the council to get to what you're asking. But I'd rather not maybe have that public exchange versus talking maybe in a smaller setting. But I think there's a way for the council to get to where you want to be.
Understood what you're saying, but I would like the administration to get to where we want to go, not the council.
Okay. Any other additional questions, comments? Is that you?
Oh, yes, that's it for it. That's my submission. Thank you.
So I'm just piggybacking off of what Counselor was just, so is this something that we're going to be discussing individually? Because he asking for a budget for committees. So I'm assuming that y'all and somebody have been talking, and other people have been left out, and nobody said anything to anybody about what you guys are talking about.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Uh, Mr. President, Counselor Tate, uh, your, your energy is received. Uh, I think in terms, I, yeah, right, but. But, Counselors, if you'll give me a second. I think, uh, the budget was assembled not necessarily on all of the desires of the council, but basically a culmination of your response and feedback to the survey. So none of your, uh, concerns went ignored. But, uh, as it relates to some discussion with the leadership, uh, I don't necessarily think the budget that we're presenting for F Y twenty-five is the only ask that you have. And that's the best way I can maybe address that. I think we have some departmental needs that we are attempting to address with the F Y twenty-five budget, but that's not the only funding source where you can find support for programs.
And may I, Mr. President? Um, I think the survey, and I basically have allowed what, not that I've allowed, but I, I think just as we took the initiative to change the way we are approaching the entire budget through the Town Hall on last night, I would also ask the council that it becomes very difficult for us as staff, and mainly Jeff, because he manages the budget, and he talks to each one of you. Sometimes I'm privy to that conversation, and other times I'm not. But it gets to be hard to consolidate maybe nine different requests that, over our experience, we kind of know what may get through, where we could bucket monies in certain places and then come back and reallocate that money for you all still getting you what you need. So it may not look like that at that particular, at this particular time, but we can get to that. But I also would ask that, and I have never had a, uh, the council as a whole has not sat down to discuss its departmental budget. It is usually left for us to try to work those numbers, massage them, and then come out and create what you need on the back end of it. So certainly, if you don't see what you want right now, it is probably, we, we have, we have put it in the budget to try to get to that without offending any one of you in that. But I think going forward with how we are proceeding at this time, it needs to be a collective effort. So we won't be, uh, it won't give us, give, give the posture that we've left anybody out. Um, it can be a collaborative effort that we are directed to do, uh, from, um, a council's perspective, and not just one or two councilors that are coming to us. And then, um, Counselor Tate feels like she's left out, and that wasn't the case.
So, um, given the fact that the department's departmental budget hearing with the administration's budget committee is scheduled for Thursday afternoon, I think, you know, the, the concerns, uh, with, you know, the, uh, requests that aren't reflected in the proposed budget. Um, if we could have a conversation between now and then to discuss, you know, alternative strategies for meeting those requests, um, that'd be very much appreciated. Okay. Yeah, Counselor Smithman?
Um, I, I do want to thank, uh, Council President Quinn and central staff, because you can see for one of the positions, it's for, um, uh, HICA consultant, and that's to help us with the, um, our Spanish-speaking constituents. I know my district, I think maybe Counselor Tate, almost all of our districts have, um, constituents that don't speak English as their first language, so I thought that was a move to really making sure we're giving everything translated, just making sure we're appealing to all different, um, all of our constituents. So hopefully you all, you know, are okay with this. I think this is very needed. And they are willing to go to any of our events, neighborhood meetings. It's not just for one district, it's for all nine districts. And we had talked to them about seeing how they can, uh, coordinate, where they can make sure they are equally in all of our districts and making sure they don't have conflicts. So, um, I just want to thank Council President Quinn and, and, um, our, our deputy county administrator, council administrator and council administrator. I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. But, and thank you for suggesting it. Uh, the other position is for a legislative analyst, essentially. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. All right. Seeing no additional comments or questions, we're going to move on to, um, taking up, uh, item of old business, really, uh, the, we had delayed a decision on right-sized parking, so, um, I think, you know, we're, we are all familiar from the previous presentation back in, I guess that was January when it was initially, uh, presented. Um, so at this time, uh, Hunter Garrison, you know, if you would come and please give us an update. Um, so you've got like a brief slide deck here, so go for it. Turn your, hit the button on the bottom at the base. You want that red light on the mic to come on?
There we go.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Hunter Garrison. I service as Senior Planner in the Department of Planning, Engineering and Permits. Um, I want to thank all of you for taking the time to engage with us following the previous Committee of the Whole of the meeting, or Committee of the Whole, and hear us out on the Right-Sized Parking Initiative and allow us the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. So with that, um, I will pretty quickly jump right in. This will be a much higher-level overview presentation rather than the deep dive we did last time, and then I'll hopefully be able to answer any other follow-up questions you have. So again, our, our current parking requirements today are that, you know, when a development is built, the city requires a certain number of parking spaces be provided on-site. They cannot provide more or less than the required number without regulatory action, which would be requesting a variance. So today, you know, if you're required to have five parking spaces, that's what you have to build. You cannot build less than that, and you cannot build more than that without seeking some type of variance or other process. So some parts of downtown, uh, do not require a certain number, so it would be anything in our mixed-use downtown equivalent zoning category. Some have a fifty percent reduction. We see a lot of, uh, variance requests or rezoning requests for, um, zoning to be changed to equal that mixed-use downtown category to avoid parking minimums today. And there are some small discounts for transit proximity or bike rack installation. So key proposed changes, the minimum parking requirements are removed. Previous minimums become the new maximums for surface parking lots. Parking decks do not have a maximum if ground level is activated. And additionally, um, garage parking or carport parking that is covered for a residential dwelling unit does not count towards their two-unit maximum. That, that was a question we had earlier, so I just wanted to go ahead and address that one. And then developments over a certain size, which are twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand square feet, must submit a transportation demand, demand management plan or T D M plan. Um, and that today is a requirement that does not exist. So there are some cases, for example, a property that is in the mixed-use downtown zoning category would actually have more oversight than they currently do at this time, where they are just allowed to build with no parking. If this ordinance change is passed, they would have to show us how they will address transportation demand going forward in the future. So some types of developments have bicycle parking requirements, and, um, if accessible via maintained, good-conditioned alleyway, residential parking would be required in the rear. So four key reasons to eliminate parking minimums. Minimums make housing less affordable and limit where it can be built. When you have to build a surface parking lot or a large amount of parking, it affects the number of units that can be built for any housing development, and maybe that's not needed along high-frequency transit lines or along our densest, most urban corridors. So parking minimums make sprawl endemic. This prevents a multimodal system from becoming viable by increasing the distance you must travel. So every time, again, we require a large surface parking lot, we have to build out further. It requires more infrastructure that must be maintained. It contributes less to our property tax base. It essentially creates this sort of self-defeating cycle where we can never get on top of our infrastructure maintenance, especially if it relates to sidewalks, because we're always spreading out farther and farther. And then finally, parking minimums block redevelopment of vacant or underutilized buildings. As complying with minimums can make projects unfeasible. Again, if you have a small lot, you would like to redevelop that, you would like to build housing. It's much more of a challenge when you have to build one point five units per dwelling unit if it's over two bedrooms. So by allowing this, we can create some infill development. It can be mixed use, it could be housing, that can kind of fill in some of those missing teeth in Birmingham's fabric. And then parking contributes to environmental hazards such as flooding and the urban heat island effect. You know, one question we've had come up is like, you know, are you just replacing impervious surface parking lots with impervious buildings? And while that may be true on a very site-specific level, it's not true as you spread out towards a wider analysis of the city, because, you know, today for every development, you also have to build the parking. If we don't have these parking requirements, you can create more density, and we can allow more land to be preserved and undeveloped because we're not continuing to sort of perpetuate urban sprawl. And then another thing that we've done to address this is actually through the T D M, uh, the Transportation Demand Management Plan. You can implement our low-impact development measures, which include bioswells, um, stormwater runoff management techniques that do, um, positively contribute to us fighting that urban heat island effect and sort of remedy that environmental condition that is created by large surface parking lots, which creates so much flooding. So again, you know, what this does, it's about right-sizing parking. It's not about building none, it's about building the right amount. It's about letting the market decide what's appropriate for the location, and that business owner who knows their business better than we do versus us just using a formula that's existed for a very long time. It's not tailored to our city to just say you have to build X number of parking spaces, regardless of whether you're in this part of town or that one. And that's, that's created this excess of parking all across America. There's about six parking spaces per resident in the United States. Um, it's like six billion-something spots. So we've really overbuilt this parking, and this is, again, allowing for a market correction. We spoke with a number of peer cities. Richmond, Virginia is probably the one that has the most in common with Birmingham in terms of its history, its development pattern, it's located in the south. We spoke with them, they did this about a year and a half ago, and they've tracked new developments that have come along since passing it, and they've, they've had virtually no developments built without any parking. So again, that shows that developers really know, you know, how much parking is needed for the site. The business owners know how much parking they need. Let's just let them build that and figure it out versus us mandating this flat number that's created all these issues. So, you know, it makes transit more viable due to increased density along the corridors. That also helps with walkability and pedestrian safety. When we're designing for cars, we get an environment that's built only for cars, and it makes it much more dangerous to be a pedestrian. You see this with excessive number of curb cuts that you have along sidewalks where you have all these surface parking lots. If every single business has to build a surface parking lot, that's probably going to come with a curb cut, which makes it more dangerous to walk by if you're a pedestrian, especially if cars have gotten larger, uh, bigger front panels. You know, for a child, you're hitting impacted there, it's, it's, it's very dangerous. And then finally, um, it addresses stormwater, urban heat island and climate change effects, as I spoke to earlier. So what this doesn't do, it does not eliminate parking altogether. We've seen that in cities throughout the United States that have done this. We are not the first ones to attempt this effort. Uh, it's been in place in many cities for over a decade now, and they still have parking. You do not see developments thrown up overnight where no parking exists. Um, it doesn't remove A D A parking requirements, does not address curbside parking enforcement issues. That's more of a, uh, code enforcement issue, um, or, or policing. And it does not address parking in front yards or affect residents' private driveways or garages. So there's no changes to that, other than the preference that it be located in the rear if there is a well-maintained alleyway. So, yeah, again, parking will still be built. This just lets the market drive it and allows parking to be sensitive to the context in which it exists. So we can see in this little, little data graph here that, you know, in Buffalo, eighty-three percent of their developments still included some level of off-street parking after they removed minimum parking requirements. And then how do we manage parking going forward? Through the Transportation Demand Management Plan. So developers would be required to provide a threshold number of T D M measures to address their transportation demand. Uh, T D M essentially is acknowledging that people arrive to destinations by a variety of means versus minimum parking requirements, which assume that the ideal way to travel anywhere is in a single occupancy vehicle with only that one person driving, and that they need a parking space. So one thing that T D M will allow us to do is we're offering, essentially, you know, they have to hit a ten- or fifteen-point threshold when they apply for a development, if they're over this certain size. So developments that are located near B R T are near our, um, Birmingham Parking Authority decks. They get bonus points or essentially free points for that proximity, which it makes them, it makes it easier for those developments to meet their threshold. But if you're developing in a part of town that is further away and outside the perimeter where we don't have bicycle facilities, we don't have high-frequency transit, we don't have public parking readily, readily available, it will be much, much, much more difficult for them to build without some level of on-site parking, because the on-site parking does reward points. I'm not going to say it's impossible for them to do that, but it would be, it'd be a very serious stretch that would potentially even cost more than just building twenty-five, fifty percent of the parking maximum. And, you know, as part of this ordinance, we know that, you know, we may not get the points right the first go-around, so we will review this annually and adjust those T D M points as needed if we see that it's not working or not effective in one location. So, thank you.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Hunter, thank you for that. Uh, a few questions. Why, if we're going to let the developers determine parking, why are we implementing a maximum?
I do think we see some negative effects with overbuilding parking. Um, again, we don't want to see these large surface lots. They do have negative effects to our city in terms of, um, environmental effects, our property tax base, how much land they're taking up. There's no maximum for decks. If they build vertically, uh, they can build as many as they want. But surface parking is, is somewhat cheap to build for large-scale developers, and we don't want to see these excessive maximums. They could still seek a variance and get that if they needed it. But, um, you know, otherwise, I think with the development pattern that we've had here for so long, we don't want to see parking continue to be built higher than those numbers. And we don't generally, you know, maybe Tim could speak to this further, but we don't get a lot of requests to exceed that maximum. Um, and typically, when they do, they implement our low-impact development measures, which just give them a, a higher number.
Okay. So over the past five years, how many developers have, have requested a variance to exceed the maximum?
I can't think of a time when that's occurred. I think generally what happens is they, they look to, uh, the, the stormwater engineer to determine whether or not they're doing something on-site that would control stormwater in a way that would satisfy that requirement. So, you know, developer comes in, they exceed the maximum, you know, they can install pervious surfaces. You know, they can install, you know, um, a detention pond. And so typically, what happens is the stormwater engineer will say that they can exceed the maximum because they are doing these stormwater interventions.
And would that still be a, a venue for, a route for them to go?
Yeah, that would satisfy the requirement of the ordinance.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. My second question is the T D T, uh, excuse me, the T D M, the Transportation Demand Management Plan. Um, what, what would, so to me, it seems like this is just another, um, hurdle for developers to be able to develop. Um, what is the average cost of having this done? And I'm assuming you have to hire an engineer, correct?
No, not necessarily. Uh, you know, these T D M plans, uh, there's essentially an Excel spreadsheet. And you, you have a menu of options. Some of that would be like, for example, um, do you have a shared parking agreement? So if you approached another business, made an agreement with them to use their parking. An example would be, let's say you have an office that operates eight to five, and then a restaurant's peak hours are six to ten. They could enter an agreement. They could enter an agreement. That would give you points. Building 25% or 50 or 75% of the parking maximum, that also awards points. So you check that box, you get the points. You can build onsite bike parking if that's covered, it's worth more. If you have transit proximity, you can illustrate that on a map pretty easily, that's worth points. And then you see that, we've got the Excel sheet made so that it will sum that up for the developers and they would submit that with their site plan. We would review it as staff, along with staff from BDOT, and then just approve that through the typical zoning process. So, no, I, I don't believe that would require the hiring of an engineer.
So y'all will provide the spreadsheet to the architect or whoever is working on it? Okay. And with that plan, so basically the parking is being, the parking minimum, would it be fair to say that the parking minimums are being replaced with the TDM plan?
For large-scale?
For 25,000 square feet and above?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Moore.
I think that was kind of along the same line of question and I was going to ask, because I see on Slide 6 where it says parking will still be built. And if I'm a developer and that is the most expensive thing for me to build, how can we really ensure that, you know, parking will still be built in these?
For, you mean for the TDM?
Well, yeah.
So it's kind of a two-fold answer.
It would, it would have to happen anyway because of the 25,000.
Right, it, it would trigger that. So generally, banks often require you to illustrate that you have some amount of parking available to receive financing for a business in the first place. And two, you know, there's a lot of case studies in other cities that show that, you know, developers are in that to make money. And if they feel like they need parking on that site because of where it's located for them to be successful, then they will build it. And that's certainly what we see, you know. You don't see Walmart in cities that don't have minimum parking requirements built without parking lots because it's a reasonable assumption that people are going to drive their car to a Walmart. Now, if you're a small business in a walkable area like, you know, through Woodlawn's main corridor, you wouldn't necessarily have to provide that parking because it would already exist through on-street parking or other means or publicly available lots there. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, and, and this is only impacting businesses, right?
This is, any development in the city would not have a minimum parking requirement.
So this would also include residential as well?
Correct.
And, okay. And I guess I'm just trying to, you know, really understand, because I, I have been in spaces in residential areas where, you know, people have actually parked in my front yard. I know that they're not supposed to do that, but this is what people do, right? And so just trying to make sure that, you know, if we were to move forward with this, what type of reassurance could we give to our residents that they wouldn't have to be inconvenienced in that way? Because I, I heard a lady say today, or a very wise lady say today, if it's not in writing, then we can't guarantee that it's going to happen. And so just trying to, you know, understand that portion, like, how can we ensure?
You know, I, I think BDOT is really stepping up their enforcement efforts. We've already seen that since we started this initiative where, you know, if someone is parked illegally, our partners with BPD are willing to go out and tow or issue tickets in those circumstances. I, I will ask Director Fowler to answer any other enforcement-related questions and how we'll assure that, that people aren't parking illegally.
Thank you. And again, I'm James Fowler, I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. Counsel Moore, have you received a copy of this in a previous meeting? And you may not have.
Yes, I have.
So I won't hand it out again unless you would like a copy.
Yeah.
We'll just hand out some copies. So under Mayor Woodfin, we have organized an effort to significantly revamp how we enforce on-street parking. And it goes beyond more than just enforcement, but how we look at just treating our on-street parking system as a whole. So I know we've gone through this several times, so I won't necessarily step through all the 12 steps that we've outlined. But over the last six months, we've been working very closely with the police department and they have started actually towing for safety violations. So in particular downtown, so if people are parked in an alley that they're blocking, if they're blocking a bus stop, the police department has started on a small scale to tow for some of those safety violations. And then more recently, they have expanded those efforts through some of their task forces, task forces that they have. And then we are working closely with the administration to figure out how we can continue to build the capacity to do more enforcement. We want to go beyond just enforcement for safety violations and I would consider front yard parking to be similar to that where somebody is definitely illegally parked. So parking on sidewalks, parking in front yards, blocking people's driveways. So our intent, and Mayor Woodfin is very serious about this, is to grow our capacity to be able to enforce those kinds of infractions.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Sure. Go ahead. Director Fowler, from a budgetary standpoint, what have y'all requested to be able to do what you just said in this upcoming budget?
So there's a couple of ways to answer that. The police department right now is looking at how their staffing opportunities allow them to put more resources towards parking enforcement. And that doesn't necessarily require an increase in budget for them because they have vacant positions in their department. And so they're looking at how they can do that. We have not gone through just yet our detailed budgetary requests, but we have requested a couple of key positions in our department and the police department, that there may be a couple of different ways that we can fill. And so since we haven't gone through that discussion just yet with the administration, I don't necessarily want to answer how we'll solve it, but the administration, and I believe Chief Mitchell is here, or he was here, but he and the mayor are very serious about this. We met two weeks ago with the mayor and many different directors of the different departments, because there probably are about eight different departments that in some respect touch parking enforcement, including the judge at the municipal court. So we met in the mayor's office a couple of weeks ago to talk about next steps on this and then we've had some follow-up meetings with those directors. So this is a serious initiative, it's probably one of our department's key initiatives for this next 12 months. And then also the mayor is definitely digging in and making it a key part of his agenda.
Okay. Would you need a change in ordinance from this council to do, for towing for unpaid violations?
Not exactly. So I, I think technically we could tow today. However, OCA has recommended that we probably clarify within our ordinances that we're able to do that. The big thing that I'll point out about that is that it definitely does not require any sort of changes at the state level. So it's, at the municipal level, we're allowed to tow for unpaid violations. We would want to work through a policy with you all to figure out where is that fair threshold for where we hold people accountable? Because we don't want to be overly aggressive with that. Want to find that balance between accountability and being too aggressive with enforcement. So only some really minor tweaks to our ordinances are recommended, but technically we do have the authority today according to OCA.
Okay. I think that it would be very prudent to have the council on the same page with y'all, as you just said, before towing vehicles other than imminent safety concerns. The third thing I wanted to ask you is for Park Mobile, there are on the meters which seem to be somewhat broken sporadically. There are, some of them have Park Mobile stickers on them. Why are we not pulling up every single meter and putting Park Mobile stations on the streets?
That's a great question. So we are starting to slowly do that now. One of the reasons that we hesitated to do that is just concerns over not everybody having a smartphone. And so, but today, I think we're to a point to where any reasonable person that's driving a car, that can afford to drive a car, probably has a way to call the phone number and make a payment. And so we're starting to do that now. We're not doing a blanket, there's several thousand parking meters, but as construction happens and in areas that we're doing kind of expansions and adjustments, we're not putting back physical meters, we're actually just putting in the signage. And I expect over the next couple of years, we'll probably, we'll be removing all of the physical parking meters.
So, but Park Mobile has those kiosks also that you could walk within a block or two if you don't have a smartphone to, to remit payment. Why would we not utilize that?
So the reason is because they're really expensive to purchase, install and maintain. And so cities now are starting to just use parking through their apps. And so I think at one point several years ago, that was a helpful transition tool. But where we're at today, we don't necessarily have to have that.
Okay. And then what would it cost to actually take up the, the quarter meters, whatever those are called?
We have not calculated like a blanket cost to do that. But my expectation is that just with our own in-house crews, we'll be kind of steadily doing that over probably the next two years.
You think it'll be complete in two years?
I don't want to commit to that because we don't have like a hard plan written out, but we're starting to remove them now. And so just kind of gradually in areas, especially where there's changes happening, we're kind of focusing on those areas where there's changes, like in the Parks Side District, for example. And so alongside redevelopment, we're, we're removing those meters.
My concern and the reason I'm asking this line of questioning is because in these transition periods, the public gets confused on how they should pay for parking. And if we're also starting to tow, while there's confusion about how you pay for parking, it becomes really problematic. And the public reaches out to the council when there's a problem. And so one thing that I'm concerned about is, are these in, are these in numerical order of, of, of how, how quickly you're going to achieve? Are they in any type of numerical order for a reason?
They are generally in numerical order. Some of them may overlap and maybe a couple of them could be kind of switched out, but I think in general, we have them in the order that we're going to pursue them.
Okay. Because, you know, I, I have a lot of concerns about the parking reform strategy. I don't, I don't know if we're, I guess that's different from what we're talking about with the right-size parking initiative.
Yes, so they're, they're different, but connected.
Can I speak to that? Your under, your concern is understood. We are not going to start towing for unpaid parking violations without addressing a good policy with this council and a strategy for doing that. But we do need to start thinking through that now. So that's why, that's item number four, is we need to start kind of setting that direction. But we will not take any action on that without working through that very closely with the council.
Okay, thank you. You know, it's, it's interesting that we would start towing and then come up with a database of violations after we start towing. If that's, which is why I'm asking if these are numerical order.
So number four says draft a policy for towing. So we would draft that policy. But in order to actually start doing that, we would have to also complete items five and six, and really five and six. So we would work with the council before we got to that point.
Okay, and then at what point would we start towing? Because I guess if that's the draft, there's no, there is no tow.
Yeah, I guess we don't have an initiation step, but that's going, as we work through that policy and that approach, we're going to work through that with you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just in a little way, a little bit of background. So when I first came to the council in 2017 and became chairman of the Transportation Committee, one of the first things that I did was connect with Judge Sparks over in municipal court and inquired about outstanding parking violations. So that's been six years ago. At that time, there were, I don't remember the exact number, but it was well over $3 million in outstanding parking violations. And, and Judge Sparks had the, those parking violations ranked, you know, the individuals ranked. And there's more people than I could count just by glancing at the, that spreadsheet that are habitual offenders owing as much as $7,000 in unpaid parking violation, you know, fees. So, you know, I think as we consider, you know, developing a policy around unpaid violations, that, you know, those are the folks who are likely to be at the top of our list for determining who gets towed for parking violations. And, you know, that's another reason why the database is, is important. But, you know, they're, these, these are the folks who walk up to their car, see a parking ticket, crumple it up and toss it in the, in the gutter. So there's, my point is, is that there's a lot of those folks out there and those are, you know, just based on our kind of preliminary conversations, likely to be the folks that are first in line to get towed for, for parking violations under a, a, a policy like this. But all of that to say, I, I think that, you know, the, based on what I'm hearing from the council, a, a lot of the concerns about right-size parking are connected to enforcement. However, enforcement is separate. And, you know, I'm also concerned about this because, about enforcement, because I think that, in my experience, there are plenty of people in the community, business owners, residents, it doesn't matter, that, you know, there are certain fireworks folks. If, if you give them an opportunity to be disrespectful or abusive or, you know, to take advantage of other people in public infrastructure, they will do it. But, and that concern really is based in our enforcement and/or the lack of enforcement. It's, it's not really based in the right-size parking proposal or the zoning changes that are being considered or being proposed to us. So I think, I do think that, you know, what you're hearing from the council is that we have to, you know, do these things if we're going to go in this direction and support right-size parking, that it's very important to us as a council that we are also putting a lot of emphasis on the, on the enforcement side. And, and, you know, I'll just say that the, the enforcement side has been a longstanding problem. You know, this, this is not something that's, that's new, that, you know, we've had a challenge for whatever reason, addressing these concerns. And I, I think that, you know, while we're having this discussion, the council is really interested in leveraging this discussion to make sure that those concerns about enforcement are heard. those concerns about enforcement are heard and that, you know, we're getting some response. Others might call it commitment from it administration and staff that, you know, the enforcement concerns are going to be addressed and that we're, you know, aggressively going to pursue this stepwise uh process that's been outlined. So that makes sense. Council Clark.
Thank you. Definitely makes sense, agreed. Just wanted to, I mean, I guess confirm, I I I feel like I know the answer to this. You all talked to members of the development community to um get, you know, to to test the waters and get feedback and see impacts. I would imagine U A B, the city of U A B is very excited about this. Are they exempt? So is does this exclude the mass the U A B master plan area?
A comment on that, just based in my former role, I was the director of campus planning. Uh, U A B will build parking. They're going to build as much parking as they can afford to build, uh, but in terms of their requirements.
Right, so in terms of U A B's requirements, it's it's the same as it is for everyone else in the city. They don't have any special exception in terms of ordinance. But in terms of our outreach with the development community, we did put together a stakeholder working group as we worked on the right size parking initiative. And one thing we discovered that, you know, actually under our old ordinance or or the existing ordinance, rather, it was really difficult for like um twenty Midtown, the public's development, to build the parking they needed because of the maximums were still applying to decks. Um, that was also, we spoke with um the same developer regarding a potential hotel downtown. And, you know, our maximums did not really make that hotel feasible. They it didn't seem to work. So we worked with them and actually removed the maximums for deck building. You can go up as high as you want in terms of the number of spaces. Because we find that the market is actually a really effective regulator of that. It it costs about twenty six thousand dollars per parking space to build a deck and you're not going to spend an extra million dollars on a deck unless you really feel that you need it. Uh, so that is one regulation where we actually eased it up based on that feedback and communication with the development community to allow that while still constraining the surface parking lots, which are problematic.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'm unclear on the U A B answer because I'm not sure, I I don't know if you're saying this doesn't apply to U A B or that they won't get any relief. I mean, I think everybody's going to build parking anyway mostly, but um I can remember sitting in the planning commission when they used to be accused of playing a shell game with the parking. But but I'm I'm still thinking they're a pretty dense um environment that could probably stand some relief from minimums or requirements. I mean, is is that, is this not going to do that for them?
They would, um, you know, because of the size of their development, yeah, they would still have to meet the requirement of T D M. And and they they already do that in a way where they've developed a very sophisticated model, where they model their parking requirements and needs. You know, they calculate in all their surface lots, all their deck spaces, all the people that they employ and visit. And so they have a very sophisticated model that determines their parking need. And and it it's, you know, they actually report that to us and they make adjustments to that on a periodic basis based on their master plan and 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 the development on campus. So they build a new building, they adjust their model, and they may have to add a surface parking lot, you know, remote lot, you know, or they may have to build a new parking deck. Um, and so and they're currently engaged in that process.
Okay, but this applies to U A B as well as every other part of the city.
They have a requirement, their facility over fifty thousand square feet. They have to provide us a T D M plan. They already have a T D M plan that they developed starting five, six years ago through this modeling procedure that they use. It's a very sophisticated model that many campuses around the country use uh to manage their parking demand. And they've they've recognized and realized a lot of efficiencies in how they manage their parking uh through that model. Um, you know, of course, you know that they utilize a transit system, they have remote lots, you know, they have they built several decks in the last few years. They intend to build, I think, at least two more in the next several years.
Okay, so the their parking management system, the T D M model is about five years old, you think?
I believe that's approximately.
Yeah, and one thing I'll mention is that their current current director of transportation at U A U A B is uh their former T D M manager. So Brian Atkinson is very much about trying to get, you know, all of those folks who are single occupancy vehicle commuters um on campus, you know, to to consider utilizing other modes of transportation. And, you know, that that is a problem that is costing U A B a ton of money. You know, they have as part of their long-term strategy a hundred and sixty million dollars built into their plan just for new parking decks. And they're they're actually working on constructing one of those parking decks right now. So um yeah, they they have a big incentive to get people into other modes and and not be, you know, building extra parking. It costs them money.
I have one last question and thank you all for this enlightenment. Uh, I haven't been on the planning commission a long time, but um what what implications, if any, are there for these people who just develop surface parking lots for profit? Just to serve areas where there's, you know, I don't know, where there's retail and entertainment and I mean, are there any implications of this for them?
So standalone surface parking lot, like just building a surface parking lot and that is the only use on the parcel is not a permitted use. It is it is not legal.
So so people have those now and I I assume they'll be grandfathered in, but you're saying going forward, people cannot take a a parcel of land and build surface parking as the primary use of that land. Is that what you're telling me?
That that is correct.
Okay. Just curious because would the city be an exception? Like if we do a public parking lot in Avondale or in Lakeview to support the retail district? Or do we have to follow the same rules everybody else has to follow?
The audit says that we don't have to, but generally we do follow our own policies.
Okay. Just checking.
And we would uh want that too. So uh, that's one of the reasons that the city, we have a parking authority and why cities have parking authorities is we want shared parking assets that are available to the public that can be managed as shared assets. That's much more efficient uh than the private parking systems that we have now.
Yeah, well, I I never liked them on corners in particular. It's like, that's not a good corner use of land, but anyway.
Can I speak to, I guess, real quick? The reason that we're talking about this is because what we have realized in Birmingham and across the country is that the negative effects of the medicine, which is the parking requirements, end up cumulatively being much worse than the problem we're trying to solve. Uh, so like an example of that, I'm, you know, I'm thankful that Birmingham is an old city. And so we have parts of our city that were built before the car was so dominant. And uh those places would not be allowed to be rebuilt today. So Five Point South, as an example, a lot of those buildings could not be built today uh with our parking requirements. And so, you know, if the enforcement is such a problem or if the lack of parking is such a problem, you know, would we really go into a Five Point South and start deconstructing buildings to put in parking lots? Would that make that place better? And I think the answer to that is no, we would not want to do that, right? Some of the most valuable places in our city and some of the most valuable places around the country are places where there are parking problems because there's high demand and that spillover effect, although it can be, you know, stressful, it comes with a lot of benefits. It makes places more walkable and so the values in those neighborhoods tend to be a lot higher. In your districts, you can probably think about areas where we have built a tremendous amount of parking and that parking stays vacant. Yeah, there's a there's a lot of vacant parking, yeah, in most areas of the city. And so a requirement to build parking essentially translates as a requirement to build sprawl. The side effect of that is that we end up building places where we're required to drive. And, you know, where I grew up, I grew up outside of the city in the suburbs. So our Christmas parade was on a state highway. We'd park in a parking lot of a fast food chain or a big box retail and we'd watch the parade come down the state highway. That's America, like that's most of America. And so that's what we're requiring with our parking requirements. So that's not unique to where I grew up, that's in a lot of areas of our city. And so what we're asking for with this is not to tell people they can't build parking, but just to allow the flexibility to start not having to build it, to not have to build that sprawl. Because the developers that benefit from these requirements are more of the dollar stores, the big box retail, the fast food chains. They're the ones that can navigate these. It's the small entrepreneurs, the barber shop owner, the coffee shop owner. They're the ones that have a hard time navigating this and that's why we get the America that we've gotten today in terms of our built environment.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Director Fowler, I think the last time you guys were here and you bought disinformation before us, I want to speak to five and four because I think we had a conversation about that. One being, how far far are you guys going back in the database to? How you get, how you generating your data on the the people that have unpaid parking violations? Where you getting that data from?
So the municipal court maintains a database. If you'll recall, Mayor Woodfin did a pardon up through two thousand and ten. And so the data goes back that far. I can tell you in conversations with Mayor Woodfin about how to move towards better enforcement. He would want to initiate that with some sort of an amnesty period where we could work with the public to help get, you know, those backlogs resolved uh one way or another. So nobody wants to go back and start cracking down on things under a totally different set of rules like has existed over the last fourteen years since two thousand and ten. Uh, we want to kind of get a fresh start and uh go from go forward with a new understanding that we will hold people accountable if they don't pay their parking tickets.
Yeah, you 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 answered my question because that was a concern for me. You know, we drafting a policy and saying it's starting now. And we definitely don't want to go back and criminalize and penalize people who have not paid tickets. They may not have the same cars that they've gotten the tickets in. And so just to hear you say that that's the that's the thought process here of going forward, fresh start and not retroactive those people that have unpaid parking tickets into this new uh policy.
One other point uh regarding leniency that I think is important is although there would be a policy, if you had so many parking tickets, then at that point we could tow your car. The discussion so far, and this seems to be where we're going to land, is if we just came upon your car and you were parked legally and but your only violation is that you had unpaid tickets, we would not tow your car. You would have to have a violation. So you could, like, let's say you had several parking tickets and you met that threshold. You could still drive and park legally and your car would not get towed. It's only if you were continuously illegally parking, that's when your car would get towed. Uh, so you could still come downtown and conduct business if you parked legally.
Okay, and finally, and I think I may have mentioned this too. I think a lot of oftentimes what I've seen constituents are, you know, we're not educating people on what we're doing. So what is the goal and the plan of action to educate um constituents and the Birmingham residents on this new reform strategy?
Absolutely. So a a major part of our team is the Department of Public Information. And the idea would be that we would give a lengthy heads up and I'm I'm pretty sure the media will be very interested in this topic. And so uh we feel like uh as we get into drafting that policy, again, we'll work with the council to make sure that we have a a notification plan. Uh, but I imagine uh that the media is going to be very interested in this, so.
And can you guys, once you guys push out your public information, can you guys provide us like with a one pager, like, hey, this is going to happen, this is going forward? You know, especially when we go in the neighborhood meetings, making sure that we did distributing this information um out to you know, the constituent base. And I would suggest, um, and I'm sure the mayor probably does this, is put it on his mailer that he puts out.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
So um Councilmore just uh informed me that he needs to go pick up his kids. And the purpose of having this uh conversation today was to try and um determine whether or not the council was ready to take some action on moving this to the full council for consideration so that we can have a public hearing. The public hearing, folks can come into the public hearing uh at the council meeting and voice their concerns. So at this time, is there a desire amongst the council to advance this item or do we still need more time for discussion?
I'd be comfortable for, but I want to ask him, one, to to confirm what I think that that I understood you say because our most wise member of the council did warn us about not having things in writing earlier today. And so I just want to make sure that it's clearly on the record. And that is that before towing starts, there will be an ordinance change that comes to this council. If we pass right size parking today, this will not proceed without an ordinance coming for us.
Yes, sir.
I have no more questions.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I do have some. First, I want to say to my colleague, Mrs. Clark, I appreciate your concern for U A B, but when they can't find a place to park, they park in the residential area. So I don't want them to be able to change their parking. And that yet brings me to Mr. Fowler. I noticed that the item that I am most interested in is number twelve on your list of twelve items. So you consider it to be fairly unimportant, but I consider it to be very important. And it it it's worded strangely because it says expand zones into residential areas bordering the C B Ds. That sounds like you're going to let other people expand into the residential areas meager amount of parking instead of only the residents. So can you elaborate on number twelve on your list?
So um, two points. So it's number twelve because the majority of the items that precede it have to occur before twelve can occur. So if we don't have enforcement, if we have, um, we have a lot of people today that disregard the law because they don't pay their parking tickets and there's no consequence. So we, it it won't make sense to expand into other areas with a new program until we have some real accountability that goes with it. So it's not because it's unimportant. I think it's just that the other items have to occur first. We've got, and also, we're going to have to expand our staffing like um in the police department. So all those things have to precede it. So it's definitely not that it's unimportant. And in fact, um, you know, as we continue investing in entertainment venues, because we don't want to build those venues with a sea of parking around them, number twelve is extremely important as we're talking about this. So it is uh not lost on us how important that is. So the second part of your question, that's a policy that I think we're going to have to work through with you guys. Something that I I don't want to skip over. So the reason cities manage on-street parking is to incentivize turnover and also to make sure that we're enforcing the rules regarding safety. It is not to generate revenue. The side effect of managing parking well is that it does generate revenue. One of the benefits of generating revenue in cities that have done this well is they can reinvest a part of that revenue back into the neighborhoods where it's generated. So Five Point South, for example. We would propose creating a system of parking benefit districts so that some of the money that gets generated in Five Point South goes back towards fixing the sidewalks, fixing the fountain, you know, fixing landscaping, those kinds of things. And so in that scenario, we may uh have a discussion about if there's some spillover effects in certain areas and it may not be the same for all areas. But if, you know, several days out of the year, there's some spillover effects and that generates a lot of money, then maybe there's a benefit to reinvesting some of that money uh back into the community. That's not decided. That's something that we'll have to work through with you guys when we get to that point.
Yeah, and if you have residential neighborhoods that have no other parking because cars had not been invented when they were built, then there is no place for residents to park except on the street. So if you let other people come in and take So if you let other people come in and take up their parking, they have nowhere else to park. They can't park on their roof. You know, there's just a lot of things that are unreasonable. And so, that, you know, my concern is about the residents of Birmingham. I know everybody's got their, their issues. But there are only three of us who have districts that are abutting the central business district where people don't have any place to park except on city streets. So, you know, I'm gonna be concerned about the residents. I, I know that Counsel Williams is gonna be concerned about businesses because he's the economic development guy. You know, everybody's got their issues because we've all got districts that are the same and yet different. But this is a big one. And y'all have been, you were working on the residential parking zones when you were at U A B. I remember it because it was about the last thing you were working on before you became a city employee. So that's been how many years ago? Three?
So we have to solve all these other problems before we can solve that one.
Yeah, I know, I know. But, um, the sense of urgency, the sense of commitment and follow-through are things that the city often is not good at. It might become good at it soon, but it's not been good at it so far. So, I wanted to ask, since I'm getting nowhere on my resident-only parking zones, I guess my next questions are for Mr. Hunter. So, Mr. Garrison, if a person builds a single-family home, they're allowed to only have two parking places. Is that accurate?
That is correct in that, but that's not counting garages or carports or any covered space. And that is the provision that is in our existing ordinance today that has not changed as part of this right-sized parking initiative and ordinance change. So you could have, if you had a garage or carport, you could have two spaces under there and then two spaces outside that. So you could potentially fit four vehicles.
Okay, but if you don't have the funds to build a new garage, then you're, you know, you're, you're, you get two parking spaces. And then it says parking is not required, is not allowed in a required front yard. Or whenever a required front yard exists within the same block phase of a dwelling district. Little bit confusing. But so, a person who needed to have more than two parking spaces if they aren't, if they don't have a garage and they don't have a carport, they would have to go to the zoning board of adjustment to get more parking?
They would have to do that today because that provision in the ordinance is not changing as part of this ordinance. Yes.
Okay, 'cause I know y'all were very concerned about the number of people that were going to the zoning board of adjustment asking for parking variance, well, parking modifications. I think that was what initiated all this change in the parking, or was it that book?
That's primarily for business uses. I, I would ask Tim to jump in if I'm incorrect, but I think we very rarely if ever see, uh, requests for zoning variations for additional residential parking spaces because that two maximum is what exists on the books today.
Okay, and parking enforcement, whose, whose job is parking enforcement? Is it still the police department or has it been handed over to B dot?
So parking enforcement, um, about five years ago, up until about five years ago, was in B dot. And then it got transferred to the police department. So it's currently in the police department and our expectation is that it's gonna stay in the police department.
Okay, and they just, uh, handle meter parking?
So currently with their staffing, and this historically is how they've operated. Uh, they, um, oversee the metered area. When requested, they'll go out into the residential areas, but they don't do that except on kind of a limited basis.
Yeah, 'cause we've been told in the past that they only handle meters. So they, they can handle other things. It's just that someone preferred they only handle meters?
So, their time in terms of enforcement in finding infractions is most productive in the metered areas. When they go into the residential areas, they can find infractions, but they don't, uh, find nearly as many infractions. Uh, so that's not to say they don't occur, just the volume of infractions, most of them happen in those kind of metered downtown areas.
So when we do away with all our meters, what are the parking enforcement people going to do?
So they're still going to write tickets based on safety violations and then also based on what would still be called a meter infraction, even though it's not a, a physical meter, because you are still supposed to pay. So, um, they check a database today. If you have paid into the Park Mobile system, your tag shows up in the database. And, um, if, if you haven't paid and you don't show up in the database, then they'll write you a ticket. So they, they write tickets, uh, on Park Mobile today.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh, again, um, trying to decide, determine whether or not the council wants to move this on. I mean, I suppose, I can't remember, you know, if back in January, we had a motion and a second on this item. So, um, maybe we re, need to redo that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So, motion four, advancing it to the full council for consideration.
Even though I love you, Valerie, the motion's four.
Okay.
Moving it forward.
That's Counsel Williams, seconded by Counselor Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
All right, so the ayes have it. So this will advance to the full council for consideration. And that's it.
And a public hearing?
Yes, yeah, uh, so it's an ordinance. So it will be an item of permanent operation that requires a public hearing. So all of that requires notices. So, notice requirement is, what, two weeks? At least four weeks, four to five weeks.
Yeah, we would submit an item to council to set a public hearing four weeks into the future.
Okay. All right. Counsel Moore. I know you got babies waiting on you, so you're free to go. Do we have any items of new and old business that folks wish to discuss, discuss at this time? Counselor Smithman?
So these are the two bills that Senator Linda Coleman-Mannison has, uh, introduced in the State House. That were, these were provided to us by Administrator Kidd, just as an FYI.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.